Well, why don't we go ahead and get started? Um, good evening, everybody. Uh, we are gonna ask, just because it can get a little challenging with sound, that if you're not speaking, to please mute. Uh, and then unmute when you need to speak. Um, so just wanna kind of establish a few things, uh, with, with this virtual meeting. Any vote we take tonight, folks, is going to have to be by roll call. So we'll be doing quite a few roll call votes, unfortunately, but that's required by law. Uh, and so, uh, that, um, we'll, we'll do that as well as attendance in just a, just a minute. Um, first, I just wanna, those of you that were, uh, able to dial into the public hearing a couple of minutes ago, again, a great big thanks to Greg Rosso for all the effort he put into, you know, allowing us to put that out there and then also be able to get together in this forum. Um, I know this isn't ideal, but these are crazy and challenging times. So, uh, you know, it's great that we have the technology within the district to be able to get together and make sure business continues even when things are, uh, you know, even when times are tough. So, um, you know, great to, to see many of your faces. And although it's virtually, at least we get a little opportunity to connect and see one another. I gotta be honest with you, I've been doing a lot of these, uh, throughout each of the days. I feel like I, uh, I'm in Star Trek lately. That's all I've been doing is, uh, getting on video conferences. So it's, uh, pretty, pretty, uh, pretty funky, but, but, uh, it's a great thing to have nonetheless. Um, and hey, a real special thank you to Erin, Deb, uh, the entire leadership team, our principals, uh, on just the absolutely phenomenal job that they've all done to then, to navigate through these very difficult times. And, uh, you know, in many instances, without a lot of, uh, great, uh, advice and counsel coming down, uh, from others and having to really, uh, you know, think through and make some tough decisions, but also the right decisions to be able to make sure the district continues, that our kids continue to receive an education, then that our faculty and staff and everybody associated with the, the district is supported. So, uh, you know, I've been talking with Erin Bailey and, um, you know, we are, uh, as we all know, uh, in great hands with her leadership. And, uh, I don't think she's sleeping very much because all she does is think about what she's gotta do tomorrow. But we're grateful for all that she's doing, uh, through these very difficult times. So, real quickly, just a quick call of attention. The agenda for tonight, folks, is pretty straightforward. And, and we called this meeting for, uh, a couple of reasons. One, obviously, we wanted to get everybody together. Uh, we've got some updates to get, particularly around remote learning. And we wanted to be able to dedicate a fair amount of time, uh, to providing an update on that and allowing any questions you might have, uh, to, to come over for Erin and, and the, and the leadership team. But, you know, secondly, we obviously had, uh, some pretty, uh, strict, uh, you know, state laws that we have to meet in terms of having a budget established for the region. And part of why, uh, we needed to ensure we had some form of a hearing, virtual, uh, is what we did, is because we needed to have that hearing in order to be able to vote the assessments that are necessary to get to our member towns, uh, particularly as we start to plan for town meetings. Uh, and so tonight's agenda that you saw posted will be pretty straightforward. Uh, item number one will be a vote of member town assessments and transportation assessments. Uh, item number two will be a vote around the school choice cap. And then number three will be a COVID-19 update from Dr. Nozick, as well as an overview of the Tantascwa District Remote Learning Plan. So before we jump into all of that, we need to do, uh, attendance. And we have to do attendance, uh, virtually, obviously. And so what I'm gonna do is also gonna be what I do for any vote we have to take, which is I'll call your name and then you can just, uh, say yea or nay. In the case of attendance, let me know if you're here. Uh, and so I'll call your name and just, uh, please cite that. And then you can go back on mute if you're not speaking. Uh, Mr. Hagerty from Sturbridge.
Here.
Mrs. Noise Miller from Brimfield.
Here.
Mrs. Barnacle from Sturbridge. Not present. Mrs. Beleza from Sturbridge.
Yeah.
Mrs. Cunningham from Brookfield. Not present. Ms. Custance from Brimfield.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald from Sturbridge. Mrs. Fitzgerald from Brookfield.
Here.
Let the record state, Mrs. Fitzgerald from Sturbridge, not present. Mrs. Fitzgerald from Brookfield, present. Mr. Iller from Holland.
Here.
Ms. Leo from Sturbridge.
Here.
Mrs. Randall from Wales.
Here.
Ms. Alden from Holland. I saw Laura on.
Yeah, we didn't see Laura.
She is, she's there. She's just muted.
Oh, there's Laura, okay. Uh, Mr. Valcourt from Brimfield.
Here.
Dr. Waters from Sturbridge. Not present. And Mr. Goodwin from Sturbridge.
Here.
Great, alright. Alright, we will get right into it. Uh, so the first item on the agenda, uh, is a vote of member town assessments, the transportation assessments, as well as, uh, a vote of the overall budget. Um, these items have all been recommended by the Budget Subcommittee. And so what I'm going to do is I'm gonna call the topic. Mrs. Boyd will, uh, effectively outline what the motion is. I'll bring that to the floor as it's a recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee. And then we'll do a roll call vote for each of these. Gonna be a little tedious, folks, but it's what we have to do. Alright, so Mrs. Boyd, the budget for the Tantascwa Regional School District for fiscal year 21 is?
Yep, the request is for $24,803,584.
Alright, we'll bring that to the floor. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Alright, seeing none, we will call for a roll call vote. Again, you'll say yea or nay. Mr. Hagerty from Sturbridge.
Yay.
Mrs. Noise Miller from Brimfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Beleza from Sturbridge.
Yay.
Ms. Custance from Brimfield.
Yay.
Ms. Fitzgerald from Brookfield.
Yeah.
Mr. Iller from Holland.
Yay.
Mrs. Leo from Sturbridge.
Yay.
Mrs. Randall from Wales.
Yay.
Ms. Alden from Holland. Hey Laura, are you yea?
Thumbs up. Yay.
Okay. Mr. Valcourt from Brimfield.
Yay.
And Mr. Goodwin from Sturbridge.
Yay. And Pat joined.
Pat, Jan joined.
Oh, Pat did join, okay.
It's Holland.
What's that? Mrs. Barnacle, are you in favor of the motion?
I did not hear the motion, can you repeat it?
It's the budget, it's the overall Tantascwa budget number.
Of $24,803,584.
I'm assuming that, um, I have to not vote on this, correct?
I don't think so, Pat. I think, I think you're okay on the overall budget. I think you have it in the balance, that's fine.
Okay, alright, yay then, yeah.
Great. Did anyone not have a chance to vote? Then the motion carries unanimously. Alright, Mrs. Boyd, the next item.
Yep, next, I would like a vote specifically to spend the $600,000 of E and D toward the junior high door and window project.
Alright, that's a recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee, so we will bring that to the floor. Is there any discussion on the $600,000 transfer from E and D to fund the windows and doors project? Any questions? Seeing none, I'll conclude debate. We'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Hagerty from Sturbridge.
Yay.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yay.
Mrs. Beleza.
Yay.
Ms. Custance.
Yay.
Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Yay.
Mr. Iller.
Yay.
Ms. Leo.
Yay.
Mrs. Randall.
Yay.
Ms. Alden.
Yay.
Mr. Valcourt.
Yay.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yay.
There anybody that did not vote, that wishes to vote? Motion carries. Mrs. Boyd, the operating assessment.
Okay, yeah, so now, um, I'm looking for a motion or vote to, to accept the total net operating assessment to members town, member towns, at $13,774,135, distributed as presented, and after the revenues applied as presented.
We'll bring that motion to the floor for consideration. It's a recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee. Are there any questions? Alright, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Hagerty.
Yay.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yay.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yay.
Mrs. Beleza.
Yay.
Ms. Custance.
Yay.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yay.
Mr. Iller.
I feel like we need a hooray or something like that.
There you go. Very good. Mixing it up. This is Leo.
Yay.
This is Randall.
Hooray!
Ms. Alden.
Yay.
Mr. Valcourt.
Yay. Yippee ki yay.
And Mr. Goodwin. Motion carries. Yeah, the transportation assessment.
Yep, um, the request is, and then I actually would like to speak to it for a second, but the request is to vote to send the total assessment of $293,577, again, distributed to towns as presented.
Alright, that's a recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee. We'll bring it to the floor. Deb, you wanted to speak to it first?
Yeah, I did want to, uh, get ahead of things in case anyone has heard out there, um, and mentioned, we actually did, a couple of weeks ago, receive a supplemental payment from fiscal 19, transportation, of $33,000. So, we could've done one of two things, and I'm recommending the second. First, we could've applied that $33,000 here and distributed it. But since this number is already, the funds we're putting towards it are higher than in the past, so that the assessment is lower. My recommendation is that $33,000 sit in the reimbursement, the transportation reimbursement revolving fund, so we can use it towards fiscal '22 transportation assessments. Because fiscal '22 will be when we're going out again for, four out of five towns will go, be going back out to bid for transportation. And that year one typically has a bump up. So having a little bit of additional reimbursement money to put towards it might help, help level the assessments a bit. So, that being said, if there's no issue with that, this is the proposal I have. If someone has a major issue, we would have to recalculate with the additional $33,000 here.
Deb, can you just reread the assessment figure one more time?
Yep, $293,577, distributed as presented.
Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, I'll suspend debate. We'll call for a vote. Mr. Hagerty.
Yay.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yes.
Mrs. Beleza.
Yay.
Ms. Custance.
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yay.
Mr. Iller.
How about a whoop whoop?
Mrs. Leo.
Yay.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Ms. Alden.
Yay.
Mr. Valcourt.
Aye.
And Mr. Goodwin.
Yay.
Motion carries. Alright, Mrs. Boyd, the debt assessment.
Uh, yep, so the request is to vote, actually, to refund a total of $870,167, distributed as presented. Does anyone need an understanding of why we're actually refunding our towns on our debt?
Why don't you give, why don't you give a quick high level?
Yeah, this is, um, the, I think this is actually the fifth and last year that we have been actually giving money back instead of asking for a share of the payment, for the final payment of the high school. Uh, that is because for the first five or six years, all of the towns were actually paying a higher amount toward the debt payment. And then when the, um, SBA audit was done and recalculated, the money they started giving, because originally this project was a $34 million renovation project, it then became a $52 million total new construction project. Took them a while to increase what they were giving us. When they did, it became a higher amount for the life of the, um, of, of the loan, so to speak. But, just like our mortgages, every year, what we're actually paying on the loan is declining while we're still getting the same dollar amount from MSBA. So for the past four years, we're literally getting a refund amount that is higher than the actual debt payment. So, we take the difference and we refund that back out to the towns.
Thanks, Deb. Any questions, discussion on that? The debt assessment. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Hagerty.
Yippee doo.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yes.
Mrs. Beleza.
Yay.
Ms. Custance.
Yay.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Iller.
Oh, yes.
This is Leo.
Yes.
This is Randall.
Yes.
Ms. Alden.
Yes.
Mr. Valcourt.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yay.
Motion carries. Alright, Deb, the final item, the capital plan.
Right, so the final request is to vote to support capital expenditures of $1,032,510 to be funded from school choi- I'm sorry, I need to take that back, because that includes the operating. So, what we're really looking for, for capital, is 489,510 plus the turf debt, I'm sorry, 732,510 in capital items to be funded by school choice.
Alright, we'll bring that to the floor. Recommendation of Budget Subcommittee, discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll suspend debate. Call for a vote. Mr. Hagerty.
Yes.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yes.
Mrs. Beleza.
Yay.
Ms. Custance.
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald. Mr. Iller.
Yes.
Ms. Leo.
Yes.
This is Randall.
Yes.
Ms. Alden.
Yes.
Mr. Valcourt.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yay.
Motion carries. Nice job, everybody!
Thank you much, folks, thank you much.
Alright, great work.
Valenzola.
Yeah.
Why is it that every time Sheila Noise Miller votes, that your picture pops up after she votes?
Does it?
Brimfield sticks together.
I guess I'm on her mind.
The poor.
Alright, we'll move to the second item on the agenda, which is a vote of the school choice cap for FY '21. Uh, I'd like to recognize Dr. Nozick, uh, to make that recommendation. And then we'll, on this one, because it won't be a recommendation out of a Subcommittee, I, I will need someone to actually move it, and we'll have to note that. And then an actual second, and we'll have to note that. So let me allow Dr. Nozick to, uh, present the school choice recommendation, and then we'll entertain a motion to approve. Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you, Mike. Um, and thanks to everybody for coming out and for all your ongoing support. I know it's super stressful, really challenging times for all of us. Um, the good news on the school choice numbers, however, is that we have seen what I would call a return to more typical, and in some cases for ninth grade, um, actually increased interest in school choice students for next year. Our total seventh grade, um, applications, and I do have to say that we did not get the mail today, and we have literally received, you know, photos sent via email from folks to make sure they made the March 31st, because they were concerned about the mail. But as of Tuesday, there were 48 applicants for seventh grade. That includes nine current school choice students within our six elementary schools that take school choice. We have 12 seventh grade siblings who have applied, so those would be current children who are school choice in our district right now. And then we have 27, um, lottery students. So, uh, 48, it is a fairly high number. Last year, we recommended 42. And our class sizes are truly about, um, the same size, roughly between that 295, 96, and 300. So, my recommendation would be to accept 43 of these spots right now, keeping the seventh grade number of, uh, enrollment number for next year, based on our, our residents right at that 296 number. And just put five students on the waitlist. Typically, what's happened is there will be students who did put in an application, who just for whatever reason, um, choose not to attend. Whether it's a summer with their friends, they just decide, or rethink it and they wanna stay. So, um, history tells us that, I think we can be fairly confident that the majority of the students, if not all of them, would come in. Um, but 43 will put us right where we have been with then five on the waitlist for grade seven. Grade eight, we have one sibling application, excuse me, we have no sibling applications, and we have eight general lottery, lottery applications. Our current seventh grade is at a roughly 296, 297, so we would not recommend taking any new spots for next year. Uh, what we do is we do do a lottery, so there'll be a waitlist should there be some sort of change in that eighth grade resident number. We'd be available to just go and access that waitlist. The waitlist for the, from the lottery. Ninth grade is where we have the one sibling. We do have one ninth grade application who has a sister who made it in last year as a freshman. So, um, my reco- would, recommendation would be is that we take the one sibling, and there are nine general lottery applicants at this ti- excuse me, 17 general lottery applicants. Sorry, I'm a little tired. Um, that's a very large number. We've had 10 or 11 the last few years. So, um, we actually think that by just taking the one sibling now, we might be able to go into the waitlist if we just do the, the lottery and waitlist them. It's really going to depend on the number of students. We have students who will leave eighth grade for freshman year to go to an independent school or a parochial school. Um, but because we haven't solidified our tech tuition numbers yet, I'm reluctant to let all of them in, obviously, even five or six. So I think we should do the one sibling and then waitlist the rest in hopes that honestly, by maybe our May meeting, we'd be able to welcome some more freshmen in. And then grade 10, we're not gonna recommend any. We do have six 10th grade, um, lottery students. And we had, for the first time, an inquiry for a junior, um, from another town to come in, but we don't take 11th or 12th graders. So, numbers are very, very high. So I don't know if you have any questions before I just remind folks of kind of the numbers, the hard numbers we're recommending.
Any questions for Erin? On 43 school choice slots, five students on waitlist for seventh grade, and then one sibling for freshman year.
Right.
I just heard a question.
Yep.
From the ju- for the junior year, apply. Do they tell you why they apply, or they just apply?
They had a, uh, yes, they, they reached out to Mr. Lucas. Their sibling had been pulled in the lottery for high school last year. May have been a case where one sibling wanted to stay at their high school, one wanted to come here, and the experience has been so positive for the child their, their junior brother wants to attend.
Okay. It wasn't like they're being bullied at the old school and they need a new here, no?
No, no, it's a sibling, it's actually a sibling, so.
The sibling is a, is this current school choice student?
Yes.
Right, Laura?
So, I know that a while ago, or a little while ago, that they changed how it works with if you were in the school, you're not guaranteed. And we grandfathered some of the kids in. So, the kids that are sixth grade now in all of the districts, do they technically have, uh, the in over the ones that just joined the waiting list because of the grandfathering?
That's correct. The new guidance from DESI last summer said every student who's in our district from K through six for this year, who were enrolled as school choice, will be allowed to, to honor what was the old system, which is if you were here in sixth grade for three years, um, prior, you'd automatically be in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great.
What would be the harm in being that one junior in that would like to come to for family reasons?
Right now, our policy and our applications say we do not accept 11th and 12th graders. So we technically wouldn't, wouldn't be able to, unless you wanted to.
We'd be violating our policy, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but we write that policy, right?
We do. But we, 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 the current, the current policy is what it is, and she's, that's her recommendation is enforcing that.
Is enforcing that.
Yeah, that's what.
And the, the five students we're gonna leave, leave off from seventh grade is, um, I know we come up with a number every year, and, and I think I ask the question every year. And one of these years, I'll actually get it and, and stop asking the question. But what, what would be the issue with having five extra students in seventh grade that can follow all the way through? I mean, we can actually put dollars on that, or what that, those five students are gonna be able to bring to school after those six years?
Right, it's more, more around looking at what our trend data tells us around what the class sizes have been that are working for our teachers. And this would get us right to the number of about the 296, 297, which is where our seventh and eighth grade, uh, spot has been. That, again, that's not to say that if 10 students move out of the district or, or choose to go elsewhere, but we're trying to stick with that close to 300.
Try to keep it right around that number.
Yep, that's correct.
Staff that way, and, and.
Exactly.
And in re- in reality, Eric, it's, uh, I'm not a betting woman, but if I were, chances are pretty good, given our last couple of years' experience, that we're gonna get almost all the way to that 47 or 48. Because there are definitely a handful of students on that list whose mom put them there, but they don't necessarily wanna come. So, it, it never happens that we just start going down the list and everybody says, yes, 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 all the way to 42. There are definitely gonna be some that either decide not to come, or we're in a couple of schools and end up getting, going someplace else. So we end up going, I bet, almost to the end of that waitlist. So most of those will, will get the opportunity. I think with 48, we'll actually get 42.
And by making sure we vote the numbers tonight, we are able to keep our commitment of the first Monday in April being the lottery draw. We do ask people to notify us, their, their letters will go home Monday, to notify us if they're declining, um, that position. And sometimes they will. For example, last year for seventh grade, we voted 42. On October 1st, our seventh grade number was actually 39 for school choice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Alright, so I, I do need someone to move the motion to, uh, authorize 43 school choi- Who's making that motion?
Ted.
Mr. Goodwin has made the motion, 43 and one. Who seconded it? Mr. Iller seconded it. So we have a motion made by Mr. Goodwin, seconded by Mr. Iller, to approve this number of 43 for seventh grade and one sibling for freshman year. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll suspend debate. We'll call for a vote. Mr. Hagerty.
Yes.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yes.
Mrs. Beleza.
Yes.
Ms. Custance.
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Iller.
Yes.
Ms. Leo.
Yes.
Ms. Randall.
Yes.
Ms. Alden.
Yes.
Mr. Valcourt.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Let the record state, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Alright, we'll move to the third and final, uh, agenda item, which will be, uh, an update from, uh, Dr. Nozick, uh, around the COVID-19, uh, topic, as well as, uh, the remote learning plan for our district as a result of COVID-19. Dr. Nozick? Dr. Nozick?
Thank you, and our principals are here too, if there are, are any questions. I did forward the plans that went home to our Tantascwa families today, to everyone, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at them. Before we dive into that, I want to thank everybody, every administrator, teacher, support staff, custodian, cafeteria worker, everyone, and, and I apologize if I forgot anyone, and the administrators for really working extremely hard to make sure that we comply with the government's request of providing enrichment work first for that first three weeks, and now moving to a more remote learning plan, if you will, for the next three weeks or through May fourth. This has required all of us to kind of set aside our technical skills and work on our adaptive set of skills, so that we can do our best, while we can't replicate school certainly, to do our best to try and move students towards continued engagement with their school and their curriculum. And I'm very, very thankful to everybody for, for all their hard work and support. So as you know, I believe on that Friday, March thirteenth, we, back and forth, you will be interested to know that on Friday, March thirteenth, at eight-thirty a.m., we were on a conference call with the Commissioner of Ed and the Public Health, Director of Public Health, with, telling us that there was to be no school cancellation, that schools that had canceled even to clean the previous days were likely foolhardy and should not have done that. Fast forward, two o'clock in the afternoon by that Friday, when, when schools, myself included, part of, of multiple conference calls and roundtables, said there's, there's really no way that, that we can guarantee that we can meet the criteria the governor set out, which was to keep two hundred and fifty groups down to two hundred and fifty children and apply social distancing, well, people, but with, with the kids that we work with. So we did go ahead and do what most of our schools did, which was cancel for two weeks, and then by that Sunday night, as you know, the governor announced at six p.m. or a little after that, that we'd be out for three weeks. But we received notice as superintendents fifteen minutes before the governor went on at six. We received an email to watch the governor and that he would be extending the school leave for an additional week. So we met that following Monday, the leadership team, all the principals, central office administrators, to put together a plan around providing what the commissioner had described to be enrichment opportunities, not really moving kids forward in the curriculum due to the fast pace of onboarding kids. There was just no way that we could work and do that. So we pulled together, again, teachers did a tremendous job at putting together packets at the elementary level to some technology, to a combination, much more technology steeped at the Tantascwa schools. And then on March twenty-fifth, as you know, after we pushed out that initial plan, the governor has extended the leave through May fourth for school. So to say that sometimes we feel like we're building the plane when we're flying, it, it would be an understatement. We're responding constantly to changes and trying to support all our students, not just their academic needs, their social emotional needs, their physical needs. We have had, as you all know, from my correspondence, we've had medicine pickup, we are distributing food. I want to thank Deb and all the cafeteria managers and workers who are doing that. We decided to go to a weekly model for families instead of every day. It was just really unmanageable. Those numbers have increased, our free and reduced lunch numbers, and we were clear that for folks whose life circumstances had changed, and we all know, we all saw the unemployment data just today, that is, many, many families that in real time are changing their financial situation. So we anticipate that, that that number might go up. The good news on reimbursement is that, again, something that changed quite quickly is the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the USDA notified us that what had been previously waived, which meant that schools with fifty percent or higher low-income status would receive reimbursement, they were still holding on that districts with a lower percent than fifty percent were not going to get reimbursed. They have since changed that, so we know that all of our meals are reimbursable. So that was very flexible. The U.S. Department of Education has told us that we do not need to meet the criteria set out in the ESSA, the former NCLB, that says there'll be federal testing requirements for all schools. We have not heard that the state has suspended that, the MCAS, but that is in the legislature right now, and I anticipate, again, I'm not a betting woman either, but I anticipate that that decision, or that flexibility that would actually be given to the commissioner is likely coming soon, especially now that we'll be out of school through May fourth. So that's where we are on at least the history of, of how we got here. So this past week, because this week that we're currently in, it was actually week three of the enrichment supplemental work that the commissioner had asked us to put forward. He gave us this time to transition to, again, what he's referring to as a remote learning plan. He did put some parameters around that, really, quite candidly, at the urging of superintendents, saying we just can't have schools, you know, in the three hundred fifty-one cities and towns with different plans, with different goals. And we certainly understand that many of our districts are extremely well-resourced, and other districts in the state are not well-resourced, but that we needed some parameters. So he did send those to us last Thursday afternoon or evening, and then he asked that we all provide a family letter that he had crafted that really just endorses or supports the model that he had given schools for what our remote learning plans should look like. So I don't know if you want me to go through them, if you were able to pull them up on your email, if you have any questions about them. The principals, all three principals are here on the call, but I'm, you know, however you want to proceed, Mr. Chair.
If, if there are questions, just make sure that you state who's asking it, so that it will come up on the recording, it will help with our minutes. So are, are there any questions for Dr. Nozick or the principals?
I have a question, Sheila Noise Miller.
This is Miller, please.
From Mr. Wood. What happens with the housing project? Will that be carried over into the next year, and we will not be taking applicants for next year for another building project?
At this particular point, the conversation that we've had with the homeowner is she is willing to let it go into next year. So even though we've advertised that we would be listing plans for next year, we are not going to do that. And right now, the plan is that the carpentry kids and then subsequently the electrical students would finish out her project for next year. Fortunately, the homeowner is, it's for her future retirement home, so it gives her a little bit of time to be able to negotiate all of that. And it actually saves her, obviously, the money from subbing out to have it finished by other carpenters or electricians.
Right, would they, are you going to put a blurb in the newspaper or whatever that we are not accepting applicants, because I had heard they had already gone out and I, that the applicant deadline was coming up, and I figured that we would not be. I thought we'd probably be carrying it over.
It, it had gone out, and we, as I said, as recently as last week, my conversations with Mr. Seegan was that the, I wanted to find out, first of all, if the homeowner was willing to retract everything into next fiscal year, and she is willing to do so. So we will have to put a blurb out at this point, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Do that.
Are there other questions?
I have a question.
Barnacle?
Matt Barnacle. For Erin, if we, I'd like to take time to really read what you sent out this afternoon, you and the principals, and wondered if we have questions about that, do you want us to connect with the principals? I know you guys are all completely, I'm sure, overwhelmed with all this, but either you or Jody or the principals?
Sure, the principals are probably the best folks, because they have worked with their staff around, and I want to thank Adam, who I know is on the call too, and his leadership through the union. So they've really worked hard at the building level, because we recognize K to twelve, that the plan was going to look different. So if you have a specific question, yes, feel free to reach right out to them. I, I'm sure none of them will mind, and we're, we're happy, happy to do that.
Okay, thanks, and thanks for taking the time to fill us in on this tonight. I think it's wonderful.
Sure. We wanted to make sure, and you'll see in the documents, that we are, we're doing our absolute best to support the needs of our special education children, our ELL students, again, our, our low-income students, as well as to try and create a framework for, for all of our students, to make sure that there is structure, but that there isn't too much pressure on the structure. For every email I get, and I will say the majority far, far complimentary of everyone, e-every single one of us, and I, and I, that really shows the support that we get from our constituents and, and the trusting relationships, I think, that we work really hard every day, every year, to forge, do pay dividends now, because parents feel like they can reach out to, to the principal or, or ask a question and, and not worry about it. But we receive and have received a number of emails related to the pressure of the work and the situation in the home, where, where parents are concerned, they're expected to be working for their job remotely, as well as to deliver curriculum.
Right.
I think our plans do a great job at saying we really, A, recognize that, but B, are trying to balance all of the, the real challenges that every single one of us face every day during this pandemic.
This is Jen Poulsen at Custance too, and I'd like to address what Erin just said, because I have a child that has to have structure. And without the direction from the school that came home, we were having a really hard time with our youngest child and the structure. So it was very appreciative to get that flow of what we should be doing to keep those children that need that structure at that level. So for us and my family, it really made a difference for us to keep her emotionally stable, because it was just throwing off her whole schedule. So I want to say thank you very much, because it really helped us in our family, and I'm sure it's helped a lot of other people too. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Other questions for Dr. Nozick?
Erin?
Mr. Hagerty?
Yep.
Yes, two questions, and I know you're not a betting woman, but is there any speculation out there that school may be canceled for the rest of the year? I know Vermont has canceled their schools for the rest of the year. And then, oh, I'll answer that one, then I'll give you my second one.
I've, I've heard nothing as far as speculation goes, so I, I couldn't answer that. I will say that I appreciated, while we had literally two minutes' notice for the change to May fourth, that the governor was changing it as far as superintendents go. I did appreciate that he moved it far earlier. That allowed us this week of week three, if you will, of the, that the initial phase of the enrichment connectivity to families, to do more planning. We've deployed a great number of Chromebooks to families who needed them, so I was actually appreciative of the early call on that. I would be hopeful that if that's the case, that they let us know sooner rather than later, but I have not, I've not heard anything. I, for one, would salvage every minute of every school day that we could have with kids. So I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we will be back.
Second question is, and I, I feel terrible for, for the young men and young women who are in front of it, but seniors.
Yes.
Are we, what are we doing, or what are we thinking about doing with respect to trying to create some moments of celebration for the class of 2020?
Absolutely. We, Mike and I haven't spoken specifically about this, but we certainly recognize that if we're not back on the fourth, and again, we'll be cautiously optimistic, that we will have to work on that and start to plan what level of celebration can happen. Are there things that, if we weren't able to return, we would do in the summer to recognize the students? So we haven't really, now that we kind of have this next three-week remote learning behind us, if you will, the plans at least, so that we can go into supporting families and students, it'll be time for, for Mike and I to even look at, even if we come back at May fourth, you know, what was lost and how, how do we do our best? But we haven't really gotten into that level of conversation. But we certainly recognize, we certainly recognize the sadness around, you know, having this happen for seniors, for sure.
I think, Erin, that you, I think, I agree with Bill, and I think that you know that we're here to support that, all of us on the school committee, and if there are roles that you would like us to play at any time, just let us know.
Thank you very much.
I, I also agree that I, I just feel like you are, all of you, every administrator is doing such a phenomenal job in such uncharted waters, and I mean, I've sent the email, and I hope all of you have recognized that it may be inconvenient and, and new, but, but they are really, they're working hard, and it's in comparison to anyone around us, that we are above, you know, the norm of what everyone is doing and the involvement, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Nozick?
I also just wanted to say thank you for all the stuff you were doing and talking to other parents in different school districts, the ones more with special needs kids, they didn't really get much, they were like, our schools aren't helping us, but I'm like, oh, that's funny, our schools helping. So thank you for that, too.
Thank you.
I think I can, this is Ted Goodwin. I, I can say the same thing for both Greg and Mike. Your teachers have done an amazing job for Eddie and Rita. It's, it's amazing. Eddie's watching videos from all of his teachers every morning, and Rita's, she's just hunkering down, working all day. They've given her work she needs and the support. It's very impressive. It's been very impressive, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure our principals will share all that, as Adam will, with all, all the folks, because we're very, very thankful.
Great. Well, it's, it's really heartening to hear everybody's positive comments about what our great leaders have done. I've been proud of them for many, many, many years, but continue to be really proud during these difficult times. Erin is just an unbelievably calm leader who just instills calmness, even though she's probably not really that calm right now.
Yeah, good thing there's no camera in my house, or that's a different story. My husband's working, I got college happening in my dining room, and.
Oh, my God.
It's just crazy.
And a burst water heater.
And a burst water heater. Had no water, and then lost power, I think it was Sunday or Monday, for five hours at night. Just all good.
Mark, get those tech kids over there to get. But hey, I, I just, I want to thank all of you as well, right? You know, being able to carve out some time, be flexible, get together to deal with some important business, the complimentary comments you've made to the leadership. This is, you know, in all my years of being chair, and it's been a member now, this is one of the best committees I've seen in terms of the cohesion and just the willingness to partner and work together. I'm just super impressed by all of you, the questions you ask, the outreach, the engagement, the positivity you bring to the community, your willingness to be ambassadors on behalf of the district, it's just awesome. So really, really appreciate it, and a special thanks to all of you for all that you're doing. Our next meeting, folks, is going to be April twenty-ninth, that's our next scheduled meeting. I anticipate it will be virtual, similar to this, but we'll continue to provide guidance in the lead-up to that. It will be a more standard agenda, just given some of the more normal business we'll have to tend to. We'll try to make it as straightforward as we can, given the virtual environment and given our need for roll-call votes on every single vote we take. But just want folks to, to keep that date in your calendar, the twenty-ninth. Normally, obviously, because April would have been a school vacation month, we meet the last Wednesday of the month, so we'll stick with that since it's already posted. And then remember, we took a vote last time we were all together in person to collapse the June and May meetings into one meeting the end of May. I am a betting man, and we'll be back together in person for that one. So with that, unless there's any objection, I'll need to bring forward a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hagerty made the motion, and.
I'll then.
Who seconded it? Miss Alden seconded it, great. All right, it's not debatable, so we'll bring it forward for a vote. Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
This is Noise Miller.
Yes.
This is Barnacle.
Yes.
This is Beleza.
Yes.
Miss Custance.
Yes.
Miss Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Iller.
Yes.
Miss Leo.
Yes.
This is Randall.
Yes.
Miss Alden.
Yes.
Mr. Valcor.
Hi.
And Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Be safe, everybody. Thank you so much for all you do, and have a great evening, get some rest, we'll see you soon.